We are.
All right, call them meeting the order.
I pledge the wish by the United States of America into the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just one.
Roll up please.
Danny David, Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wilksey.
President.
Craig Scott.
Here.
I'm so proud.
President.
Public comments on the agenda items only. Brenda, anything yet?
Yes, I'm not telling you.
Okay. On the Zoom call, anybody would like to make a public comment on an agenda item? Going once, going twice, three times, okay. Appointments and no of none?
None.
Okay, let's just get right to the discussion items and amend the A C H E F T policy.
Hey, I added the next document over what the current policy we just adopted says. Karen asked that we include two others now. One called all pay, the other one called paygov.us to our approved vendors list. These are like credit cards, if you will, not really credit cards. Receiving money from, from anyway, somebody comes in and makes a payment they can use these sources as well. What we want to do as part of our internal control, making sure that you're aware of who we use as a vendor. So you've got that list that was approved a couple of weeks ago. She's asked to add these two, and I suspect you're going to see more as time progresses as we get more and more.
PayPal Venmo, something like that.
I.
Cash app. I don't know. I use Cash App to accept rent payments.
Yeah, so you'll see more and more of those, I think, in the future.
Okay. So where, where are those on this list?
Well, they're not yet, so.
Oh, they're not. So this is the existing list.
Right. So next week we'll have a resolution ready for you, which might be your, well, one of two action items. You'll still have claims, but would be to amend that list to include these two.
I see Transit receives from Well Vance. They must, uh, Well Vance must transfer.
I presume, I, I presume that they're transporting clients.
Think maybe reach out to Tony and see if there's other requests for payment. I have, I have renters that when they get paid first of the month, that they get fifty, seventy-five dollars worth of passes for the month.
See now, I flat out asked him today if they had that, and he told me no.
Really? Because the renter tells me that's what he does. He buys fifty dollars worth at first of the month.
Commissioner Wilksey and I were at D H H S yesterday, and there's been some discussion regarding transportation to D H H S clients. And I flat out asked him if they got tokens or vouchers or anything that they can buy in advance, and he said no.
Well.
So I.
Want to talk to Tony there.
That was Tony.
Oh, no, no, about is there some kind of driver customer setup going or?
Some quid pro quo?
Well, I don't know. Maybe they're giving them cash and I don't know.
Tim, do you want to follow up on that? Do you want me to or?
Either one of us can. I'm, I'm definitely curious.
Well, if you want to send the message tomorrow, it'd be great.
I mean, I've been, I've, we're getting off topic here a little bit.
Maybe they did it and doesn't do it anymore. I don't know.
I think it'd be great if they did that, where you could buy in advance. And I thought at one point in time, again, like I said, we're getting off topic.
I want to say I.
With what's on the agenda, but wasn't there some discussion at one point in time with them last month? I think once before about people that had paid in advance and then they weren't using, and he was talking about a mechanism to refund them, whatever their outstanding balance was.
Yeah, we had to look into this.
I, you're right. We were talking about that system. Call them tablets that they were going to use on the buses to help keep track of that.
Yeah, like we'll follow.
Yeah, let's follow. We will.
Okay. Well, is there anybody else here that the, the Rover Pass works good at, at the park, at the, that's at the RV park. Um, I don't think we need to expand that. Because that, they can just, they can just walk out of their office, go right on a, on their cell phone and do that right over their cell phone. And we've talked about doing that. What's that square code that you can scan?
QR codes?
QR. We're talking about doing that at the nature park.
Ready for donations.
But we're kind of talking about doing it through the L of the five, one, C, three. But okay. All right, well, I guess we'll put that on the agenda next week. So the, the next thing is the budget, right? The proposed budgets, you know, we've got copies.
Indulge me, I'm going to walk through this, but do you a few things I want to point out, particularly technical changes that I made to the request that came in. Uh, just for quick reference, this proposed budget with no ARPA, no revolving fund monies whatsoever come through has a surplus projected at three hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred sixty dollars. Keeping in mind that the revenue estimates are conservative, I believe that we've undercalled most of them.
Okay.
Uh, but just going back on the trends, you have a pretty good idea of what, uh, we know what the milage would bring in, but a pretty good idea of what the capture will do to that. So that six point nine million that you see there is again a conservative number based on, on that calculation. It probably will end up coming in higher than that, but that's a number I'm comfortable with. That would give us potentially at the end of fiscal year twenty-six, a fund balance at seventeen point nine percent, which would be putting us right on target for where we want to be with a fund balance. That's a tremendous movement over the last few years. Just to give you an idea of year over year change that occurred between fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four. You might remember last year I handed out a couple of different tables. One that showed us at number eighty-three of eighty-three counties, uh, when it came to fund balance by percentage of expenditures. Now, remember the GFOA recommendation is sixteen point six percent. That should be the bottom of any fund balance for a general fund. Uh, we were an anemic, I believe it was point zero three percent in twenty twenty-three. At the end of twenty-four, we're still number eighty-three, but we're at five point five percent at the end of twenty-four. So a nice improvement. When it comes to actual dollars, we are no longer number eighty-three. We jumped up to number eighty-two. We got a little bit ahead of Aronat County, uh, so a little bit of movement there. But I think more impressive. Dollar amount changed from twenty-three to twenty-four. We were number forty-one in the state, right in the middle of the pack, but our dollar amount increased by a little over, well, about five hundred eighty-six thousand, six fifty-four year to year. Most impressive. When we look at percentage of improvement, all of the counties, we were number one. We improved by one thousand four hundred sixty percent. Nobody else was even close. But when you're starting it close to zero.
There's no place to go but up.
Yeah.
Well, there is, I guess.
Quite as big a jump the following years, but that's, that's still pretty good. And it's just showing again the, the path that we're on, definitely making the headway that we want to make. But going back enough through the, the balance of the general fund, one that's not highlighted, I did want to point out is the revenue sharing. We, for whatever reason, and I will see that a number of these things get relabeled in the coming year. This one is labeled RS RF replacement revenue. This is a, a legacy line item. Since when we did the revenue sharing reserve fund back in the mid two thousand, it's about oh, seven, oh, eight, uh, where we did this. This should just say revenue, um, sharing and that's it. Uh, the budget right now projecting six hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's quite an increase, but a twenty-two thousand dollar increase over the prior year. This is still subject to the state actually approving a budget. They haven't done that yet. They haven't even gotten anywhere near that. But the House version, the Senate version and the governor, they all seem to have gelled on this. And this is what Mac is telling us is our likely number for fiscal twenty-six. So subject to change, but probably won't change. Uh, moving to page three on the remonumentation. I did lower some of the expenses there, particularly in the administrative line and then the services line. Reduce that to meet the grant amount. We get the forty-three thousand, two sixty-two from the state. And that, I don't believe we want to put more general fund money into this. Now, Randy could come in and make an argument as to why. It's not a huge dollar amount. But when it comes to the grant driven activities like this, I like to keep them at zero, you know, that we don't have much fluctuation either way. Next is on page five, under the buildings and grounds. Uh, the first one to point out toward the bottom of the page, the hundred eighty thousand dollar utility cost for this building. Uh, it looks like right now that that cost, that's the same as we budgeted this year. The total cost is probably, probably very likely will be under that amount. But I'm looking for in the coming year of fiscal year twenty-six, uh, measurably lower costs. Because by that time we will have the full impact of the lights, of the windows and of the boilers. So I expect to see that number fall. Now, of course, that's subject to rate increases and so on, but we can go back and correct for that if we need to. So that's one that we'll want to keep an eye on. Uh, there is a new line that we pointed out, nine twenty point four hundred. We're trying to get all of the utilities under buildings and grounds and not assign them to the department. Because it's an infrastructure issue. It's not something that the departments are choosing. They're not choosing to use consumers or DD or anybody else. It's just what the utility cost is. So you can see we've pointed all of our buildings off uh, in this particular line, and they were all general fund expenses anyway. So it's not like it's a movement out of, uh, you know, some other fund and putting it in here. It's not a new cost. Just put it in a different location.
So what was? It's blank for utilities for sheriff's office slash jail. For twenty-five, what, what was the number close to?
We'll get down there. I highlighted it too, but they are, but they totaled about seventy-five thousand between the two of them, so. Uh, page six, under building security, remember here just a few weeks ago, we restructured how we were doing our security and our bailiffs and so on. This looks like a huge increase from forty-nine thousand dollars in bailiff security wages to ninety thousand. But what we did was took the bailiff lines out of the court budgets and moved them up here. The grand total for fiscal year twenty-five was eighty-eight thousand eight hundred. So this slight increase, I did a little bit of math, figured out how many of those shifts that we had and did the math that way. It's a little bit higher, uh, in the coming year, but it's definitely in line with what we have spent over the past years. It's all, all being shown in a different place. Uh, under central services, under circuit court, and you'll see the same thing in district court. I've got highlighted, we've had conversations about the central service offenses throughout the year. I've asked Danielle, since we'll get a hold of the circuit court tomorrow, I have them provide you with a list like we did last year of what goes into central services, how much of its wages, how much of it is office supplies, whatever that might be, so that you can see why that number is what it is. And if there's any wiggle room there, you'll have the ability to talk about that. Next is on page nine, under probate court. A couple of things in here. First, under the probate court, uh, the probate has asked for a wage increase. Uh, the court administrator, I've not included it in my proposal yet, but just be aware next week. Uh, I want to bring to you all of these different wages, in particular, I saw all of them, but particularly for this court administrator and for our elected officials. And Brett, I'll be getting with you guys probably early next week. Uh, I've got a pretty good database now of what other elected officials are making in counties comparable to ours. Be doing that comparison and we'll be bringing a recommendation to you based on what that market study tells us. Uh, this is a group that, at least since I've been here, all we've done when we have had increases is just put percentage increases without really looking at, we'll just pick on Brett because she's here, but looking at what clerks make in counties that surround us and then maybe other counties, you know, handful that are roughly our same size. Treat this just like we do everything else. We want to be in the market. We don't want to be, you know, way up and, and over everybody else, but we don't want to be at the bottom either. We want to be somewhere in that, uh, that sweet spot toward the middle. We'll go over that in the present day next week, so you can see that. That's a resolution that you usually adopt with the budget anyway, so it's pretty timely to bring it up now and then discuss it. Uh, same is true here with the judge's salary. The judge's salary would be increased roughly nine, nine thousand dollars to a hundred eighty thousand. I want to get with the court. I think there's supposed to be a court's funding increase in the state reimbursement for that. I don't know. I want to confirm that. So you might see your revenue get bumped up a little bit to, uh, to reflect that.
Question on page nine at probate. You're, you're taking that, that bailiff, basically two bailiff lines, you're, you're moving that to security, right?
Right. That's why you.
So that's really a lot of drop in the, in the recommended versus proposed.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I'll point out when we get to the special funds, um, we did not move it out of the friend of the court. Uh, because it's reimbursed through the state. We want to show it in that budget.
Okay.
Same people. We just want to show it there so that we get the reimbursement from Lansing.
Okay.
Um, page eleven, the sheriff's office, the sheriff proposed adding a detective sergeant position. I did not include that in the recommended budget. Uh, I would argue if you're going to do this, the proper place would be in the road patrol milage fund, particularly in the way the sheriff described the, uh, position at the law enforcement meeting. He talked about it being there to alleviate the work of the road patrol deputies. Well, if that's the key, you know, definitely it could be, uh, uh, road patrol village funded activity if you wanted to go there. But I, I've not included it in the, um, general fund. In fact, I haven't included any new positions beyond what you've already approved in this budget. And here in the sheriff's office, you see of that seventy-five thousand, we had seventeen five budgeted this year on utilities. And it's just taken out of here again, moved back where I mentioned it earlier. Page thirteen, under marine enforcement, again, just adjusted the three lines. Get close to what that total revenue stream would look like. Uh, that includes obviously that, uh, Lake Ogama contract as well as the state grant. I've got it within seven dollars anyways.
Wait a minute now, um, say that again.
So the revenue that we were showing for the marine enforcement, we're twenty, it includes that state's marine safety grant.
Right.
That contract that we have with Lake Ogama, that you see the eighty-four fifty total in revenue. I want to match those expenses as close as I can.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that, that's what that revenue is all about. We have a statement in our resolution that typically says if it's funded by grant, that's where our obligation stops. Now, that doesn't prevent you from saying, yeah, we need to put another five thousand of general fund in there. You're free to do that. That's just not the rule going in.
Right.
So you'll want to discuss that if that's what you want to do and we can then put it in.
Speaking of marine patrol. The, uh, you know, the reason that we had to take and put some county general dollars is because the Coast Guard pulled their funding. Not really true. Coast Guard did not pull their funding. The state of Michigan turned the funding down.
Oh, okay. But it was a shortage of funding.
Yeah. They turned it down because there was a stipulation in there that they would assist immigration enforcement if asked. And the state of Michigan did not like that. The state of Michigan turned down all the money.
Oh. Well, then.
And there are a lot of counties, and I, I was reading the very, some big counties are not funding their marine patrol at all.
Yeah.
At all.
Um, back up the secondary road, those numbers aren't matching up on grant funded.
Um, they.
There are ways that we can.
They actually do. Back on the first page, uh, the very next of the last group, you see transfer from road patrol milage fund.
Yeah.
In that case, the nineteen six seventy-one is what brings the secondary road up to, you know.
Oh, okay.
Right, so, and that's very justifiable, uh, because obviously he's doing road patrol.
Right.
Uh, second, any additional expenses, uh, that he has are usually done, and you'll see it on the time sheets to back up the road patrol deputies. So being used for that purpose, without question, we just happen to have some grant dollars to present that with.
Okay.
And the next one, page fifteen is in corrections, just a couple of minor tweaks. Uh, the first one is under the overtime, the department was like in forty-two thousand, two thirty-one in overtime. I backed that down to thirty-five thousand, looking at where the trends have been, but also realizing this activity has yet to have a full complement of employees on staff. Hasn't happened yet. My belief is that once we have all seven working, you're going to have less demand for overtime because you've got the shifts filled. Now, you're still going to have vacations in sixth and overtime or, or in second personal time. Uh, yes. Uh, and then looking at the, um, balances of PTO that they receive. You know, I think the thirty-five thousand is enough. It's a small tweak, but I think it's also reflective of where the trend has been. Um, you know, time will tell. And then again, you see that the utility line, uh, moved. Uh, we have fifty-five thousand budgeted this last year, but it's going to be, check now, building and ground activity. Next page, page sixteen, uh, homeland securities. Uh, I don't know how you set a negative number for your grant we're facing with this year, but then that aside, I'm anticipating no federal dollars of FEMA in twenty-six right now. Now, that could change and that's great. Get in, we can amend the budget. But the way things are right now, they're just not stable. And for us to say we're going to count on forty-five thousand dollars, I, I think would be a mistake. So let's just kind of, uh, bide our time. The forty-five, nine, twelve, under emergency management revenue, that's our fiduciary with that rave reimbursement. So that's money coming in from other four counties, I think, to participate in that, uh, to offset our costs there as a fiduciary, so it'll wash out that way. But that's, uh, uh, what that's all about. That's not a new grant or anything like that.
No, that's just pass group, isn't it?
It is. So we got to show it on the books though.
Right, right. But so what's paying for the forty-nine, three in expenditures?
Oh.
We just hope the golden egg comes?
Well, it better. We've got a contract, so. Get rid of that.
When do you figure that we'll have an answer on if it's going to come or not?
Well, you see, we've already got the forty-five, nine, twelve in our twenty-five budget. I mean, it's already here, so they're already paying it. This is like, will be the fifth year of a five-year reimbursement that we agreed to.
Okay.
So it's already, they're already paying us, so I'm, I have no reason to believe they'll stop paying it all of a sudden. If they do, I guess we'll have to pull the equipment out of there as well, whatever it is that we've got in those counties. They, the other counties are using their, uh, you know, earlier year homeland security monies to pay for this too. So they've got the revenue coming in to pay for it, at least as I understand it, the way Mike's explained it to us.
Good.
Last page under appropriations. Um, or with contingency, I left that at twenty-five thousand. And that's adequate for this year. It, it doesn't appear that we're going to go over. We had a few years ago as much as seventy-five thousand budgeted under contingency. I have to say though, at this point, the twenty-five seems sufficient. We haven't had, or faced with any, uh, huge unknown expenses come through. In fact, most of that has been discretionary spending as we've talked about things. We decided to do something different than what we have budgeted. Uh, it seems to work for us. I've lucked it there. You may want to discuss a different number. Right below that, the substitution in the EDC, this would be a partial restoration. Uh, they used to receive as much as thirty-five thousand a year. We cut that out. I think it was two years ago in its entirety. Uh, a request was made to, um, partially restore that at twenty thousand. And then at the bottom, the expense for the county audit. I plugged in sixty thousand as a placeholder. The RFP responses will be here in a couple of weeks on August sixth. We'll have a better idea what that number is and we'll be able to tweak it to reflect whatever, uh, proposal we, we choose to select when it comes to doing the audit. And, uh, that will likely be broken off to into a number of the special funds, particularly funds like Transit that are required to have a, the, um, I have to say in that thing, I keep forgetting it's a secondary audit anyway that we do each year. Uh, single audit for all of the federal dollars. Uh, we will be in excess of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars again in twenty-six. I'm very confident to say that. So we'll have to perform that anyway, uh, but for some of those federally funded special funds, we wouldn't have to do that. So it's only fair that they pay the freight, uh, for that audit that they, uh, are required to do. So that's the nickel tour of the general fund, the smaller.
Oh, hang on a second. There are appropriations, childcare, the expenditures on this year to the expenditures, hopefully next year, quite a bit different.
Yep, I will show you that in the next sheet.
Oh, okay.
When would be an appropriate time, Tim, or a suggestion to either increase or decrease now or in a future meeting or?
Oh, you're just seeing this cold tonight.
Right.
But not tonight. Um, we've got until the end of, or the fourth Thursday in September, you know, to adopt this. So there's plenty of time between now and then to, uh, talk about ideas, uh, any adjustments that you want to make. Uh, you know, there's plenty of time to do that. Call in a department or two if you need to discuss greater detail uh, in, in what some of these proposals are. Uh, I don't, um, live in a world where I think you're just going to take what I give you and adopt it. That's just not how it works.
Right, no, I was just wondering, you know, when would be an appropriate time? Well, and I'll throw it all right now, the, you know, we talked about it, Jenny and I talked about, you know, a couple of meetings ago about the assessment center in Roscommon. We're giving them five thousand dollars right now. And I personally, I'd been like to see, you know, we're in a position to increase it to ten thousand. You know, I mean, they do provide a, a very vital service, you know, with Donna comes in here and sings the accolades of, you know, what they do for us and you know, I don't know what anybody else's general thoughts are, but I think we're in a good enough financial position. Five thousand dollars isn't going to break over my company at this point. Two years ago, we might have, but you know, I mean, it's something to consider if you guys are open to it, so.
I'm going to send a couple of comments. Um, regarding that, I mean, that assessment center, I mean, that is a very, very important entity. You know, those poor children that have to go through that, uh, we need to support them as much as we can. You know, being finally that we're starting to head in the direction of some financial stability. I mean, obviously we know we need to take care of our employees. Um, I think right up there on top of that would be child assessment. I think that you can see is proven itself in regards to the things that we've done over the last number of years. It'd be nice to get that line item back. But it's, it's kind of really good to see that by, you know, talking here today. Right now, we know that the courts are going to give us some breakdowns, you know, um. Really, the only person I'd like to come in here and talk to us, and you talked at the law enforcement, I mean, the sheriff's asking for another position. But other than that, I mean, this is looks pretty darn good to me. Um, and I don't want to rush anything, but it seems like two years that I've been here, this is my third year now, but this is my third budget. You know, we're right down to the last minute and it's, you know, now that we're in a position that I don't think we need to do that. I mean, I think we're pretty close now. And again, nothing needs to be rushed, but I think we could set a goal of possibly having this done by the end of August. I know as a budget committee, we've talked about that before, and I think that's realistic. Not that it has to be, but I think it's realistic that it could be.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, and I mentioned those earlier, I mean, actually started, I just spent quite a bit of time this afternoon looking this over. And I think the, the department heads that submitted these budgets did their due diligence. I mean, if you look at these, you know, as it's pointed out already, where he's made changes, not anything significant, you know, than that one position the sheriff asked for. But other than that, I mean, they're pretty much in line with what they asked for. But you couldn't ask for more. I mean, that's great. You know, we don't have to sit here and battle with, you know, department heads and say, you know, sorry, but we're going to cut you here, here and here. So I, you know, it's.
I think, I think the end of August is a realistic date, but, uh, we got, we got another. We have two more committees a whole.
Sure, I'm not, yeah, I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm, I'm just singing the accolades of the department heads.
Yeah.
If they submitted realistic budgets.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's great, because I seen them in the past, that they have pie in the sky, you know, so, I mean, this is great that they're. You know, we're this close to.
Let me throw this out, whether or not you adopt the budget in August, um, we still have to publicize a public hearing. At the hearing, you do not adopt the budget, that's purpose of the hearing is to have had this out there for public viewing and anybody with any comment in the public is welcome to come in. And discuss whatever idea they might want to put on the table, uh, if we wanted to do a hearing on August twenty eighth, I'm going to need to know that by next week. Because I've got to make uh, two publications and they're very specific as to when they have to be. Uh, very specific in terms of the font that they have to be in and everything else, uh, but if you're willing to do that, we can talk about it next Thursday and. Put it on track for our hearing on August twenty eighth, you not have to adopt it on August twenty eighth. But that would be the hearing date and you could adopt it if you felt you were ready.
I'm comfortable right now saying, let's put it on for the twenty eighth of August.
I am too.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem scheduling it for the twenty eighth, like I say, then they still have two, two meetings after that if you. Want to adopt at a later date or that one, but I think with uh, with the. Who work meetings during August, we can hammer out anything in between, you know. A hearing, sure, realistically, we're not going to hear a thing, if we're going to hear anything, we're probably going to hear it in August. But yeah, I've been through uh.
One or two of these?
Yeah, I went through eight hearings already and there's, you know, nothing going on, you know. And that's not just county, but township levels too, you know. But uh, yeah, I I, there's a lot of stuff here, I think, and we may, we may just. Call in a couple uh, departments and talk to them. A little bit here, a little bit there, I mean, a thousand here, a thousand there pays that, pays that other share. Cause I'd really like to keep to that eighteen percent fund balance as close as we can. The last thing I want to do is get a bucket spending, you know. Absolutely, so, okay, go ahead with your specials.
The special fund, first, this isn't all of the special funds, uh, it is the. The group that has the most impact on the general fund with three exceptions, uh, parks, transit and veterans. Uh, I just simply haven't been able to format them yet, I think that this one, it came out of uh. B S N A this time, it was really mixed up, uh, since I've had to go back and move lines where they're supposed to be and so on, it's just an exercise, uh. But they're all um, frankly, following suit with the uh, general fund and the rest of these special funds too, there aren't any surprises in there. But just a few things to point out on this group, the first one on the first page that you're seeing is the friend of the court proposal, it points your attention to the last. Uh, uh, item that comes under revenue, that's the county appropriation. Uh, this case, it does go up uh, right around nine thousand dollars to a hundred fifty eight, you know, six. Um, that though is based on the proposed budget that uh, friend of the court submitted, that included the increase for the friend of the court director. Which is split with the uh, probate uh, court administrator, it's the same person, just times are allocated. Uh, the court has proposed changing the allocation uh, to a seventy five. Twenty five split, seventy five percent being a friend of the court, twenty five at probate, right now, the probate. Percentage is seventeen point four percent, so I do want to talk to the court and ask about the justification for that change. Because that does impact the general fund uh, directly, uh, it would indirectly affect it if it was moved in front of the court. Because if it went above what their revenue stream was, well, then they're going to say then the. Uh, general fund needs to put more into the friend of the court fund to offset that, well, that'd be an argument, but go down to the bottom of that first page on the lower right. In each of these special funds, I will call out the fund balance for each of these. And this is a conversation that I do want to have next week, I'm going to get you a list of all the fund balances for all the funds. And we want to talk about what's an appropriate target for that fund balance, right now. Uh, a friend of the court at the end of uh, fiscal twenty five, it will be a twenty one point seven percent fund balance. We jumped to twenty four point three under the proposal that's in front of you, the open question is, what is the appropriate amount? Uh, for friend of the court, so I'll have some data to show you where, over the last five, six, seven years, if there's been a. An event where they really had to reach into that fund balance and how much was it, but I think we're going to find in most cases. A lot of these are pretty healthy, there's one in particular we're going to talk about here in a second, uh, that we really don't need to be running from balances that high. Okay, so let's take a look at some other areas that that maybe aren't being uh, uh, paid for by that fund. Uh, particular, you know, if we're talking utilities or something along those lines, let's take a closer look. But in any case, uh, if it's a millage based, maybe we don't uh, assess the full millage if the fund balance is that high. So just something to think about, I'll put that in front of you and that's incidentally one of the internal controls that was suggested that we talked about and. No time like budget time to get into that. Next page is the road patrol millage fund, I did add one uh, item of revenue here and that's those USDA grants that they receive for vehicles. We have seventy five thousand one hundred dollars sitting on the table at USDA, it's earmarked for vehicles for Ogumaw County. If we don't do it in fiscal year twenty six, we lose it, that's just the long and the short of it, no. There there are two vehicles as part of the grant, so you'll see they don't pay for a hundred percent, I think it's uh. Like a fifty five, forty five split or something along those lines, uh, so. I went back to the grant approval letters and plugged that number in, uh, and down toward the bottom, you see the vehicle purchase, that one twenty four, three eighty eight. Uh, when I talked to the under sheriff and sheriff about that, that's the full price uh, for two uh. Or a Dodge product.
Durangels.
Durango, yes, two Durangels.
They're not building chargers anymore, they gotta go SUV.
Durangle.
Yeah, you know, state police is using Durangels now too.
They got away from the Tahoe's?
They utilize the Tahoe's because they're bigger for certain things like the motor carrier guys, the E S team, their emergency services team. But they're going more and more Durangles, actually MSP, I'm going to deviate here. There's a nationwide contest as to who had the best looking state police vehicle. Or highway patrol, whichever they happen to have, last I knew, when the voting's over was, but MSP was number one with a Dodge Durango.
Does the other in black color come into effect?
Uh, no, it was blue, MSP.
I know, that's what I mean.
Are you have to buy two cars to get it, you can't buy one?
You could, if you wanted to choose just one car, we would reduce the.
But it's still a share.
It's still a forty five share, you wouldn't get the whole grant, you know, if you buy one, you would get one or the other.
But yeah, you wouldn't have to spend forty five percent twice either.
Right.
Right?
I'd like to have a a really good, strong conversation with the sheriff and undersheriff again about. The vehicles over there, I know, you know, we talked about a little and I've got the Tors there, you've got the. Ford explorers, I mean, let's see exactly what's being used, what's not being used and have a real good grasp on.
A fleet report from us, the the years, the mileage on them, I'd ask them for all that.
Wouldn't it be nice to maximize this green?
It would be, I mean, you know, I I speak from experience, because in my former life, we had. These grants and I'll tell you, you know, they were a godsend for us then, because the county was financially changed the way we're in, so. You can get, you know.
Well, I think we've really got history because now everybody's driving cars home and. How much more mileage are we putting on these things? Or are we putting less on, but I can't, can't imagine, he says they drive into work, they drive into the, in here every day, so.
And the next page, the next one you see is the C P L, is the licensing fund. The reason I'm showing you this is that second line again from the bottom, a transfer out to the general fund, so this is one fund that. Pays into the general fund to help offset the part-time person in the clerk's office. Uh, next one, M S U extension fund, just want to point out, we're maintaining that transferring from the building inspection fund to fifteen thousand, that helps to offset the. Uh, secretary who greets everybody at the door and helps uh, uh, get people to the rate permit office when they're, uh, when they come over there, that. Fund balance would end up being at fifteen percent under this scenario, back up to the C P L fund, that fund balance would be at a hundred fifty three percent. Uh, under this budget scenario, uh, but you can see it's a smaller number, but the percentage is higher.
That one needs to be adjusted, let me see, I was so focused on all this stuff, but I know that. Um, renewals are going to be more, so I need, I need to plug that in.
Okay, yeah, like you say, plenty of time here.
Yeah, that was my fault.
All right, and the next page, building inspection fund, um, their revenue is holding pretty steady, so I'm pretty confident of bringing that. Fifty five over. Anyway, this is a fund though, that um, in a hundred twenty four point three percent fund balance, three hundred thirty one thousand dollars. Uh, this is one in particular that I think about, um, you can see there is uh, office. Uh, space rent at twelve thousand, which is the same that we, you know, charge anybody else if we were to uh. Uh, and uh, anything like part, part, part of the utilities to that, that would certainly be justified. The only issue there is if we do it for one, we need to do it for everybody, so not only would they see it, but M S U would see it as well as. Uh, but that's one that um, um, and it bothers me to see a fund balance that high. Especially when we're seeing the revenue being pretty steady over there, so uh, might be worth a deeper dive, we don't even have to do it in the short term. But maybe over the next year or so, take a hard look at that and find out, i- is there some adjustment that we need to make, maybe it's in the permit fees, I don't know where.
Well, you know, I I was pretty vocal about permit fees and how high they were and stuff, yeah, I mean, they're just. They're exceeding their expenditures right now.
Yeah. The next one is the animal control fund, just want to show you that because it's, you know, it's, you know, it's free there. We've had conversations, but nothing exciting in there, no changes really, just uh. Uh, there's what the dollar amounts came out, I'm going to double check that uh. Wage number in there, I think I'm right, I'm not sure if maybe the department was proposing more hours or what, that might have been, but we'll clear that up.
Well, they ran a partial year, they.
They did, yeah, and I do know and I appreciate Paul um, making the attempt on the wages. Uh, he probably was just applying a percentage to that, based on that being a partial year before. Uh, and so on, so I can understand that, but um, with the wage calculation I have in here, I have not only the, you know, the hours. But the the hourly rate and uh, social security and everything that goes with it, I'm pretty confident in my numbers, even breaking out for the. Step increase if there's one programmed and have been pretty close over the years, but I'll double check it, it might be uh. You know, just an overestimate on his part there, it's not to say that I didn't make a mistake in the calculation too, so it's worth a double check.
I'd still like to look at the idea of a collaboration with. Aaron, if we're sitting here with. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
I mean, I think obviously, add to that. It's very new information to us and I think obviously uh, looking at collaboration sooner than later would be wise, but. My biggest concern at this point is to make sure that our service isn't changing at all with the news that was brought to us last week, that our animal control officer. Is taking the full-time position with Aaronak County.
On the last page is the childcare fund, we uh, point out that last. Number in revenue line, that four five five fifty three is the appropriation from the general fund. They are proposing a number that is less than what uh, was proposed or what was budgeted for this year. The only difference in the total on expenses is I added the seventy five dollar bank charge. This is one of those ones that for whatever reason, B S N A buries in a different spot, I'm thinking Michael just didn't see it. Way it was, but uh, that's the only difference, but this is another one where each year we talk about uh. Being cautious on the fund balance, we don't want one that's too low in this case, because we don't know. How many uh, clients they're going to have to deal with in a given year, uh, at fifty eight point two percent, four hundred seventy eight, almost four hundred seventy nine thousand. Is that uh, uh, higher than, more than we need, not enough? If it is our conclusion that it's more than we need, then the allocation from the general fund could be reduced and that's how you can control the. Uh, total fund balance in this particular activity, but I would be reluctant to do anything different without having. Judge Williams and Michael here talking about.
One could change that figure.
Say that again, I, can you say that again about what the possibility, but. Well, what did you say again?
Well, we are right now budgeting under this proposal, the two hundred forty five, five fifty three out of the general fund. If after doing our analysis, we think that fund balance at four hundred seventy eight thousand is too high, let's say it's a hundred thousand too high. We control that by reducing the general fund allocation down to one forty five, and so you'd save the general fund. That hundred thousand dollars without hurting the childcare fund. If we're confident that we could reduce that fund balance by that much, this is one that would be worthy of going back again over the last several years and seeing if there have been any spikes. Because maybe we're at that point right now, but we're in a position. Luxury, we can have that conversation now without worrying about not meeting timetables and uh, right-size all these fund balances, we might decide this is too low. And and that's, that's fine, but at least we've looked at it, we've checked the box, we said, okay, this has to be whatever the result. Uh, but I think that's true uh, for every one of the special funds. Uh, that we need to, just take a look at that at least once a year, uh, and make that determination. Uh, and this one is one, again, I know that uh, you can't have too much caution, but I think it's definitely worth the conversation.
Go ahead, Roger.
If you, if you did, say you took that hundred thousand, I'll put it in the general fund. Come into the year, we didn't spend it, if they need it, we can put it back.
We can, yes.
Yeah, the budget's a living document, so we can make those adjustments anytime we needed to, up or down.
So it's not, it's not taking it out and not being able to put it back.
Right, right, now, we haven't been able to say that in many of the past years, but we are there now, yes.
But, no, that's, I mean, any of these, I mean, they come in here and they're mad because we took it out. If they need it come into the year, we still have.
By why you need it?
Yes, it's still here.
We've got it, if you've done the valid argument and we agree, we'll put it back in your budget.
But my, my thinking is, is, I'm, I'm more the simpler guy, but if you got three hundred thousand. You can spend that, if you got two hundred thousand. They ain't so apt to spend three hundred, i- it's my thinking, if it ain't there, they might be mad. But if they need it, it's still here, it's not. That they're going to let them go and and not be able to eat, it's just. You, you, you know what I'm saying, just like the car deal, so if if we have the money to replace by half a car, is what we're going to end up doing. Fine, if we don't have the money, we shouldn't want to have to buy two, because we're buying one whole car. It's just. If if you got it, spend it, if ain't got it, you don't spend it, is my thinking.
Did they give an explanation why they're asking their their revenue? Or their expenditure on like state court chargeback and and institutional care has gone down considerably?
We can have that conversation with the, in detail with them, it has gone down, they did uh, an adjustment to the formulas.
Okay.
Last year, I think it was, uh, but a lot of that changed uh, over what we were used to paying out.
That, because to to make up the difference in revenue, they're asking for less revenue from the county. I just hate to find out that the formula doesn't work and we gotta give back that later.
Well, the state has been known to change their mind midstream, and and so we could always face something like that. They're not doing it as much as they used to do, but it does happen, but this most recent uh, changes all worked in favor of the counties. Uh, so, yeah, you're right, I mean, they're not asking for as much because the state's covering more.
Okay. Well, I think probably uh, the first town meeting in. In uh. August, we probably should have uh, Judge Williams and invite Judge Williams. But he's got a couple of different divisions here and just want to make, I just want to feel good that. But he's got a couple of different divisions here, and just wanna make, I just wanna feel good that, that's. Uh.
Next or something.
In accurate guess, yeah.
An accurate guess. That same meeting, would you like to see the sheriff and undersheriff?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, I think we might be talking with them, with them more than just once. Like that, robe control, melee, just the whole damn page.
Well, that's just for formatting, I could have got it on two pages.
Well, yeah, I know, I get that, but when, when. Other departments are formatted of much smaller space. And we're, we're, we're back to that percentage of expenditures, you know? We've been saying that for eight years now, what the difference is in the expenditures. And, yes, we made some changes, but uh, so where, where now? So where am I looking at in all vehicle purchases down at the bottom? So a hundred and twenty-four total, what is seventy-five percent, seventy-five thousand revenue stream? To offset some of that.
Right.
All right. And I wonder that we're talking accurate spending and not. I know we, we like to see every light that the manufacturers stuck on these things. And I've, no, I'm gonna hear the. The safety angle, but it's really surprises me how the sheriff, uh, how the state police can. Still only have one big light on top and a couple of small lights on the back.
They, they definitely have a lot more than they used to.
They do, by far.
Yeah, they do.
A lot more.
Everybody does, frankly, you know?
Yeah.
And it is, it's just, you know, it was.
Yeah, if you buy a Christmas tree catalog, Christmas tree lighting catalog, you know?
But there is overkill as well.
Yeah.
Didn't find a happy medium, right?
I uh, I was talking to different people over the last week about. The school resource officer and I had mentioned that we tabled the decision on it. And I was, I was told that uh, the. The school is aware of it. Before, before I, before we told them about it, so they were aware of it. But I'm just, I'm really up in the, up in the air here with that. And then the news, the news we got about them calls, everybody got that message?
Yes.
You know, this is just uh, another one of these things that we're told every month that it's out there, and then. They find out it's six months not there. And then the description of the new hire is so much better than the old one that they assumed was on there. It's a good thing it wasn't on there, but then again, we weren't getting any calls because nobody saw even the old one. So.
I appreciate.
Just kinda wondering where the priorities lie.
I appreciated the email from the undersheriff, but. Again, very disappointed to see with where we're at and fact that we. Bottom line, we wasn't on there, right, at the end of the day, that's, that's the.
Tim, I have a question. Why is there a. Just over two thousand dollar differential between the school resource, I would, my Prescott and. Oh my, I realize, I see a thousand dollars for fuel, which I understand, I'm trying to. Figure out what's, I didn't look at it line by line, and is it insurance? Cause it's, I mean, that's health insurance.
First place I would go is to look at that, so let's see. Nope. Needs a four thousand dollar request overtime on the West Branch real city versus the Whittemore Prescott, which is only two thousand.
But the Whittemore Prescott budget's bigger. Bottom line budget for Whittemore Prescott, it's eighty-two and Oma Heights is just eighty.
Thousand dollar difference in the fuel.
Right, that one jumped out at me, that's the first place I looked. Because it's, you know, a further drive off.
Well, further drive, the, the guy lives out there, I don't think it's that much.
Well, I'm.
What page are we on?
Would be page twelve.
The general.
General fund.
Do we think, so we think the wages will be less than what they're asking for?
No, no, I'm just wondering, I just wondered the, why there's that disparity between, I understand.
Right.
The thousand dollars on the fuel, but again, nothing else was jumping out at me as to what, you know? That's all. And then, and then the revenue difference, I mean, we've got, you know, when we talked about that contract was, you know, West Branch real city. Eighty-nine and then we look at Whittemore Prescott and it's eighty-seven, but they have a bigger bottom line budget than the, you know.
The contract should be eighty-five, so you're seeing that difference is the overtime that they would also do this.
Be responsible for, right, no kind of that.
So we should really see that in the projected revenue slot too.
It is, on the revenue side.
No, no, the overtime.
But I, Tim's got that in there.
No, on revenue.
He's got the whole revi, he's got it all.
His overtime build into that number?
Yeah, because the contract would be eighty-five and then he's got another.
Oh.
Four thousand for overtime, which is, if you look at their budget, you know, that's what they asked for, so he's taken.
Okay.
The contract of eighty-five plus their projected overtime and added that.
Oh, there it is, the difference is the retirement, the DC.
Oh.
DC and DV, right?
DV because this is a general fund, we lumped that all into a. One line under the general expenses, but the DCs are tied to the wage.
Yeah.
So, that's what it is.
Okay. Makes sense, I just wasn't saying.
Yeah, it took me a minute.
I knew that, I knew it had to be there, I just wasn't seeing the worst for the trees. Thank you.
I'm good for right now.
Roger, anything?
Nope.
Mark?
I'm good. Good discussion.
All right, well, I think going forward then, um, look at that first cow meeting in October, I guess. Uh, who else do we wanna talk to other than just probate and sheriff, is there anybody else you, anybody like to invite? Or you can just contact, any of us can contact Tim and. Request. I don't know, maybe. Maybe invite the board of commissioners too.
That would be a good idea. Open invitation.
Yeah, well, I don't know, you know, that county administrator got everything he asked him, what do you know? Okay. So, I think that's. The period where. It both took care of our agenda, didn't it?
Brenda, public comment. I think that's what we just covered.
So, oh, well, I just asked about what we were talking about, you have any comments in, in general?
Not every time I do, I get yelled at because it's supposed to be next week.
There's no reports, you just make a comment, you've kinda got a comment to want?
No, just I have, I have reports that I really wanna tell, but I can't.
If you got something that's really gotta have.
No, I would, I'm good.
And you're gonna want Jenny to hear the report anyway.
Yeah, yeah, you don't wanna have her miss out.
Right.
Um, Roger, got anything off the top of your head that you wanna talk about, anything at all?
Well, the heads of these departments, if they don't like this, they can come here and tell us.
Yeah.
Well, for the most part.
Well, that's their.
Get what they asked for.
Absolutely, if there's something, I mean.
You know.
It ain't that we, we gotta ask them, they know what they need, come see us, we're here.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, Mark, anything?
I do have one thing that I would like to revisit in the next cow, and that is the resolution on the um, proposal. The DTHS in regards to the PIHP.
Bill what?
PIHP, we talked, you wanted to see if there's somebody on the other side would join us regarding. The request that we have, that Commissioner Wolsey and I and Will Vance have in regards to being in opposition of.
Going private.
The state of Michigan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Doing their RFP for, and specifically excluding current PIHPs. I, that, but there's a whole ballgame, but I'd like us to revisit that and make a decision one way or another whether we're gonna support a resolution.
Okay.
In regards to that.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Osco, I know Osco County just passed theirs and Iasco was probably gonna do it yesterday from what the discussion that we had. I was, um, I sit on executive finance as well as the facilities committee. And yesterday at executive finance, it sounded like uh. We were told that Osco had already passed it, and Iasco was gonna address it tomorrow night. So, and Jalen Farrell, who's the board chair, sits on that, he's actually the chair for Wolfen, so he sits on all the committees. And he indicated that that was probably gonna pass with Iasco too as well, so. Anyway, I'd just like us to revisit that and make a decision one way or another, so we can let them know.
Yeah, one, one coming.
Yeah.
Um.
I knew it'd come.
Yeah, yeah, um. This past week, I, I, I know for myself, you know, first responders is so important and. So crucial to the safety of our, our residents to have from the police to the EMS to firefighters. And I know prayers go out for myself up in Miami, they've lost two firefighters in the last week up there. Just wanted to make that known. It's terrible.
Yeah. Well, I don't, uh, I thought this meeting went really well, and I liked the way the budget process is working this year, it's really working good. Um, I'm, you know, I'm always reporting that uh. That the budget committee is well attended, uh, the question I did have, all the budgets came in finally, hundred percent?
No.
No, we're still lacking.
Couple of my direct reports, but that's fine.
Okay, okay.
This means they didn't need anything more.
Okay, and we're not gonna give them any anymore. All right, um, no, I like to report that the budget meetings are well attended, I won't say a hundred percent, but well attended.
They are.
And that we're staying on top of the budget all, all the way through the year. And, you know, I mean, we're ma- making it very transparent in the meetings and things, so.
We had one scheduled for this morning, but unfortunately, due to the power outage, that canceled.
Yeah.
We had one last week as well, but we're gonna get in depth, we'll have some issues this week too, so.
All right.
And it truly has been almost a hundred percent.
Yes, great.
This year, they're much, much more consistent than last year.
Good, okay, well, I'll open up the public comment. Come on up and join us.
I'm laughing about nothing, I'm tired. That's all, that's what they pay you for.
Didn't have much.
My turn.
Tonight.
Brenda Simmons with the French. He has come to my attention, the part-time animal control officer for Ogumaw County is now the full-time animal control officer for Arinac County. Then it means he is also the full-time animal control officer for Arinac County, as well as the full-time animal shelter management for Arinac County. It's my understanding, the Ogumaw County sheriff did not inform the Ogumaw County administrator or the county commissioners of this change. It's my understanding they found out about this change via happenstance comment that was made by someone. Why do the changes that are detrimental to this county never provided to the commissioners or the administrator? In this case, the board of commissioners is responsible for the disbursement of the only millage that provides. Animal shelter services and the animal control officer, you control that. I've worked with the local animal shelter and the Arinac County Animal Shelter as well for several years. I know in Arinac County, their animal control officer is also responsible for the operations of the animal shelter itself. Between eighty and ninety percent of the animals at our local shelter are from the county animal control officer. That leaves the Ray family animal shelter with ten to twenty percent available for their citizens at large to, to render an animal. Additionally, my understanding is our part-time animal control officer's new hours of operation will be from four PM to eight PM. That means during the winter hours, our animal control officer will only be working during hours of darkness. We currently have an animal control officer that works very well with the local animal shelter and with the Ogumaw County citizens at large. And he does a very good job. Commissioners, you have a decision to make, I have a couple of suggestions, only suggestions. Hire our very competent part-time animal control officer full-time, or. Release our part-time animal control officer and hire a new part-time animal control officer for Ogumaw County. One animal control officer will not be able to properly perform his duties for either county. There's just too much work to be done, especially when you're a manager of an animal shelter, you've got all those reports that have to go to the state. The whole lot of accountability to that, when you're in charge of an animal shelter. And maybe your new, your part-time animal control officer doesn't realize that, but if he doesn't, he soon will. All right, so. No one's, no one of the two places are gonna have uh, the services they really deserve. Because he's gonna be spread way too thin. And uh, the one that's really gonna suffer is Ogumaw County, especially if his hours are some forty-eight, because he will only work after dark. Just some thoughts, can we have this, there's another comment.
Thank you.
I know you can't comment back, thank you very much for such a nice boring meeting, God be blessed. See you later.
Okay, Brenda, thanks for coming.
Bye.
Bye-bye, anybody on the phone who'd like to make a public comment about anything at all? Jeff Nichols, I see you're on there, got a comment for us? No, I guess not, gotta get some other refrigerator. Okay, well, then uh, I guess we'll call the meeting adjourned.
The part. Hey, this is Jeff from the, sorry, I thought I was on the right screen. But I know, I just finished cooking dinner, no, I don't have anything, we're just still having a. We're still waiting on word for the amendment to our grant, we haven't gotten anything back on that yet. Uh, we'll see how that one goes, we're not real positive about it right now.
Okay, thanks Jeff, thanks a lot.
Thanks Jeff.
Okay, stay in the turn, have a good night, everyone.